Okay, ladies and gentlemen, given
Recording in progress.
Given the length of our meeting and the fact we have an executive session, I am calling this meeting to order at 6:07 PM. This is on June 1st, 2023. And let me just get to... And this is school committee meeting 1,649. And I will first entertain a motion to approve school committee minutes. That was Art, and that was Jim. All right. Any corrections there in school committee minutes?
Um, yes. Yeah, I do. This is under... Quite a great one, particularly for ancient times. Okay, under miscellaneous correspondence. And this relates to my comments. And specifically, the third paragraph, or maybe it's the fourth paragraph. Oh, I'm sorry. It reads, Kimberly Alcantara suggested that the issue is not whether the student in question could attend prom, but instead whether he could invite his own guest, who is a homeschooled student and not associated with the district. That is what Member Alcantara said, but it's not accurate. I mean, that is the...
All right, Carl.
The recording of what she said is accurate, but it's not factual.
All right, Carl, we're just doing the minutes. And in terms of the minutes, that is accurate.
No, that's not true. So if I said in a meeting, "The Southern Berkshire Regional School District consists of Sheffield, Alford, Eggermont, New Marlborough, Monterey, and Sandersfield." And if it's what I said, that wouldn't be corrected when the minutes were reviewed. Is that accurate?
Well, it would be, hopefully, that somebody would correct you during the minutes.
But let's say no one did. That closes it off, just simply because I said it? That's absolutely ridiculous.
It may be ridiculous, but the minutes are recording that. We can, however, note that there was a difference as to the issue.
And that will be noted?
I'm going to do it right now.
Yeah, we can have that.
Okay. That's...I'm okay with that.
There was a difference voiced by other school committee members or member. Okay. And in the last paragraph, I noted that it should be addressed, and I had suggested again that it should be addressed first by policy. So I'd like to have that added. Are there other comments on the minutes? Anyone have any other issues? Oh, not issues, but items. Anyone? Okay. All right. Under chairman's report, in the first paragraph, it needs to...the second line to be turned in to the state.
I'm sorry. Bonnie, where are you at?
I'm on the first paragraph under chairman's report.
Chairman's report.
Under chairman's report?
Yeah.
Right, the first one. Bonnie's report, the information regarding superintendent's evaluation will be available soon. It must be turned in. And the results must be turned into the state by the end of June. All right? And there was one other place where I had something. Anyone else have anything? Welcome. We have this.
Yeah, but we're down a chair.
Oh.
Yeah, we need one.
Okay. Let's take here. All right. So naturally, what I noted at home, I don't have here. All right. It was not a critical issue, anyway. All right, with those changes, are there any others? In that case, we can take a vote on the minutes. We'll start. David?
Aye.
Nancy?
Yes.
Carl? Dennis?
So, do you want a motion that says as amended?
There was a motion.
There was a motion.
As amended? Did we say as amended?
We didn't say as amended.
We probably should.
A motion to approve the minutes as amended. Are you...okay.
That was your motion.
All right. In that case, we have a second there by Carl. We'll start again, David. David?
Aye.
Nancy?
Aye.
Carl? Dennis?
Aye.
Jim? Art? Kim? And Noel, Kyle?
I'll abstain.
You'll abstain. An abstention, and a yes, and I'm a yes. Okay. So that's 811. All right. Enrollment.
So in your packets to be or not to be, the June 1 enrollment is 6:13, down one. It's a grade one student who was originally a resident of Great Barrington, who chose to serve in Berkshire, but now went back to Great Barrington because of busing and work schedules with the family.
Thank you for the information. Any others? Yes, Carl?
I have a question on enrollment. Do we...I haven't seen it, and maybe that's my fault in not looking carefully enough. But is there...are there any tuition students in this district?
Tuition in?
Yes.
Yes.
How many?
Several. I don't know the number. I don't think Chris is on...oh, he might be on. We have...Chris, do you know how many...sorry, I never got back to you. Hi, welcome. And so, could you tell...do you know how many tuitioned in students we have?
I believe we have five from Mount Washington.
Yes, that's right.
Okay. Any other questions regarding this item? All right. Thank you, Beth. Nice to see we hold our own. My editorial comment for the moment. Miscellaneous correspondence, I don't see any.
Yes, there is, actually.
Oh, wait, there is. I wanted to make this, like, congratulations to you during the chairman's report. I mean, there aren't many people who, given all that you have to do, taking on this additional role, especially with an organization that is deep into research, an organization that really is trying to bring together our states' educational initiatives. So Beth, please announce the gist of it.
Well, I was really flattered that one of my colleagues, who is on the Mass Association of Regional Schools with me, asked if he could nominate me to be a member of the board for NESDEC, which is the New England School Development Council. And what I found appealing about it is that it is really all of the New England states. So that gets us access to working with several other communities who are dealing with similar issues. And I thought it would just be very beneficial to the district to have that opportunity. So it is an additional commitment of about four or five board meetings a year, but I think it'll be well worth the time.
And also, I would say, considering how we're a rural district, I've seen them be able to access large grants where they bring together... There was one I saw not that long ago, Connecticut, Maine.
Yes, Vermont.
And Vermont. So it's a great way to really be able to increase our impact. So thank you for taking on... I still say you have from 3:00 to 4:00 AM.
Maybe, Beth did. Yes. Well, we filled it.
Now you fill it.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. All right. That's the page one. All right, student representative for board. Do we have one?
I'm not sure that so close to the end of the year, there were lots of activities today that... And yes, you know, as we lead up to graduation, I don't think we have anybody for that tonight.
And I know that we all received from Charles for the student spotlight. I don't know if anyone was able to go over there.
Art went.
Were you able to see, David, what was...
Art went.
I did.
Yeah, and...
It was fabulous, all the artwork on the walls and all the people. It was...I think it was well attended from all the people that I saw.
It's incredible. I mean, you can't find a parking spot anywhere in any parking lot.
I lost my son there.
Yep.
Kyle, you did?
Yeah, I was there. I lost my son there, that's why I was late.
I was like, oh, see you later.
He took off. Three-year-old, he just went back to the car without telling anybody.
I had to park a lot of them walking.
And, well, I think it's so great. I mean, if you would relate to Charles, the fact of, you know, making this available to us. I didn't tell him that we had another meeting going on, but hopefully you did.
I did. Repeatedly.
But it's great.
Yes, yes.
Great. Thank you so much that they share all of their efforts. And I was watching the kids, like, skipping along, bringing their parents. So wonderful. I mean, that is a spotlight. All right. All right, we're up to public comment. Anybody out there in public land to comment? Okay. Our business managers' report. Chris, welcome back. Except you have to unmute yourself.
Sorry about that. I hit it once and it didn't take. There we go. So I just have one report for you tonight, and that's the warrant report. Next month, I will have probably a fairly large transfer reported, because we only had one about December itself. So this one will kind of close out the year within the transfers we need to make. But for the warrant report, really nothing unusual here. A number of warrants for retirement. Berkshire Health had a warrant as well. A couple of payroll warrants. Terry is out right now, so we haven't posted the last two payroll warrants. So those will be on the next warrant report you see. But we held off just to make sure that Terry was here when they were posted. So that's why you only see the payroll warrants through April. A couple of P-card warrants at the end, just smaller ones. And again, those are just the purchases made, quick purchases made with the district credit card. What I think we will be seeing going forward for the remainder of the year is a slowdown of the vendor warrants, a little decrease in that in terms of dollar amount, and in terms of general fund expenses. At this point in time, it's the final month of the year, so spending kind of winds down a little bit. But the grant funds need to be fully expended by the end of the year. So we're going to focus on making sure that we use all the grants up completely. And so those will probably pick up in the final month. But, you know, we do that every year. It's nothing unusual. I don't know if anyone has any questions on the warrant report?
Do we have any questions there?
Move to approve the warrants.
Okay. Is there a second? We have a second from Nancy. Any questions? All right, see none. We'll take a vote. Kim?
Yes.
Kyle?
Yes.
Art?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Dennis?
Yes, yes.
Carl? Nancy? Davis? And Bonnie, yes. Okay. We've got the approval. And you consider we're in good shape, right?
We are in good shape, yes.
Of course. Of course. All right. Business with district member towns. As you see, Lucy Prashur is here as chair of the Regional School District Planning Board. And because you're here, I'm assuming you have updates for us. Lucy?
Thanks, Bonnie. Good evening, everyone. I just wanted to report that the planning board this week agreed to adopt the recommendation of the Finance Subcommittee on the Assessment Methodologies to be included in the draft regional agreement. And those were assessment methodologies both for operating budget and capital budget. And that includes an assessment for the capital cost of the new high school to be built in Great Barrington, on the Great Barrington campus, and a different assessment methodology for other capital costs. So that was a milestone with the planning board, that we had a vote on the Finance Subcommittee's recommendation. And the vote was overwhelmingly in favor of that recommendation. And I can answer any questions you may have about that, but I did want to report that out to the school committee.
Thank you. Do we have any questions from Lucy? David?
Lucy, you mentioned the capital expenditure assessment methodology, both for the potential new building and for other capital expenses. What are the other planned capital expenses? And could you give us a general outline on how that assessment methodology would work? Like, what percentage would be...how would the percentages be distributed?
Yeah, so in your current regional agreement, you've got an assessment methodology for operating costs, and you've got a separate assessment methodology for capital costs. And so in this regional agreement, we'll have those two buckets. But we also have this third bucket, where we have a very specific allocation methodology for the new high school, which is different from capital costs generally. So if the two districts were to merge, and say there needed to be a new roof on one of the elementary schools, either in Sheffield or in Great Barrington, that would be a capital expenditure that would be in sort of the general capital expenditure methodology, right? There is a special methodology for the new school because of the history of how these discussions began and the feeling that the Southern Berkshire towns shouldn't pay a pro-rata share of that cost based on their pro-rata enrollment in the new high schools. So the percentage of kids projected to be in a new merged high school coming from the Southern Berkshire towns is 22%. But the assessment methodology that was recommended and approved by the planning board isn't that the Southern Berkshire towns would pay 22%. You've heard a lot about the 90-10 split, with 90% of the cost of the new school being covered by Berkshire Hills towns and 10% being covered by the Southern Berkshire towns with the 6% regionalization incentive that would be available if the two districts merge being applied to the Southern Berkshire side. So there's a special methodology for just the construction costs associated with the new high school. There's also a special methodology for any capital cost that would require the incursion of debt for improvements to the New Marlborough school and the Eggermont school. So it's sort of a reverse of the 90-10. And then all other capital costs. And that could be improvements to school buildings, school properties. It could be major equipment investment that would be a capital cost and require the incursion of debt. Those costs, not related to the construction of the new high school, would be allocated across the towns based on equalized value, which is the methodology that is currently used at Berkshire Hills for assessing capital costs. So relative equalized value of the eight towns.
David?
Okay, but that still doesn't answer... That doesn't answer my first question, which was, what other capital expenditures are you anticipating? And also, since that begs another question, which is, what exactly does it mean to be, what was it, equalized cost? Like, how does that...how is that equalized?
Okay, let me take the first question first. So the anticipated additional capital costs are the same as you would anticipate sitting here today for Southern Berkshire. Whatever...there's nothing special in mind. It's whatever the district needs in the years ahead, where you're going to need to borrow some money to cover it, whether it's new computer equipment, a new boiler, a new roof, whatever is needed in the future for this combined district. Those are the capital costs that would be governed by that methodology. There's nothing in particular in mind or expected, but everyone understands that over time, the districts, whether merged or separate, are going to have future capital cost needs. And so we had to put together a methodology for that possibility. So that was question number one. And what was question number two? I'm sorry, I forgot.
That's all right. Well, you mentioned that the assessment methodology is equalized.
Oh, equalized value, yeah.
So what does that mean?
So equalized value is the assessment methodology that's currently used at Berkshire Hills for capital costs. And interestingly, it was the methodology that was used at Southern Berkshire when the new school was built at Sheffield. We had an equalized valuation methodology when that debt was incurred to build that beautiful building you're sitting in today. So it's not a new methodology. It's been used in the past. It's not what you're currently using. It's what Berkshire Hills is currently using. And the way it works is you look at the equalized value of property in each of the eight towns, and the state has those figures. Those figures are reported to the state every year. It's a factor that is included in the calculation of required local contributions every year by the state. So you take those equalized values, you see them as a percentage of each other, and that's how you divvy up a capital cost according to those relative percentages. And there are worksheets posted on the website that show, you know, what the equalized value is in each of those eight towns and how that breaks down as a percentage. I don't have them at my fingertips, but they're there. They're posted on the website. And I can send them to you if you'd like, David. That would be helpful.
Well, it would certainly be good to see the information. Why was this assessment methodology chosen over any other?
Yeah, that's a really good question. And we looked at lots of different possible assessment methodologies for capital costs. And we looked at, for example, using the same basic assessment methodology for capital costs Southern Berkshire currently uses for its capital costs as opposed to the one that's used at Berkshire Hills. And after a lot of discussion among members of the Finance Subcommittee and the realization that the reason Berkshire Hills changed its methodology some number of years ago, from foundation enrollment being used, relative percentage of foundation enrollment, to divvy up those costs, the reason that move from that to equalized value was that there was a feeling that Great Barrington was shouldering too much of the burden of the capital cost as compared to Stockbridge and West Stockbridge. And in an effort to get over the hurdle of approving the debt for a new high school, Stockbridge and West Stockbridge, very generously, in the spirit of their being part of a greater community of three, agreed to change the methodology from foundation enrollment, which benefited them, to equalized value, which took a little bit of the burden off Great Barrington and put it on Sheffield...I'm sorry, Stockbridge and West Stockbridge, which felt they could undertake that greater burden. And so the way it will play out in Southern Berkshire, if, for example, you guys...put the merger aside. You guys decided to move to equalized value from the methodology you currently have. The result would be some of the tax burden would come off the town of Sheffield and on to what some would argue are the towns more able to carry that burden because they have a much lower tax rate. The towns out of the eight towns that are involved in this initiative, the ones who have the highest tax rate by far are Great Barrington and Sheffield. The Great Barrington tax rate is almost...I think it's almost three times the Alford tax rate and more than two times the Monterey tax rate. The Sheffield tax rate is more than two times the Alford tax rate and two times the Monterey tax rate. So there was a feeling that, at least on the capital side, which, as we all know, is a very small part of the overall assessment to every town at town meeting. At our annual town meeting, you see operating costs, you see capital costs. The capital costs are a teeny fraction of the operating costs. So we felt, the Finance Subcommittee felt, that for capital cost, for that smaller portion of the overall assessment, it would be fair and appropriate to take a little bit of that burden off of Sheffield and Great Barrington and put it on the towns with the lower tax rates. That was the thing.
Okay. Do we have...Dennis, you had your hand up.
Yes, Lucy, I had a...this is Dennis Sears. I had a question for you based upon that regional agreement that you were talking about just a little bit ago. One, congratulations. I'm sure that was an awful lot of work to get put together. What I'm curious about is, in any way, that regional agreement have to be approved by the towns of the eight towns?
Oh, yes, absolutely. That's part of the vote. The vote, yea or nay, on the merger is a vote to either adopt or not adopt the new draft regional agreement. That is on the warrant, absolutely, Dennis.
Have you ever thought about that it might be instrumental and helpful to actually pass it through the towns first before there's any vote on whether or not, you know, that it is going to be an eight-town school committee and so forth?
What do you mean, pass it through the towns first? What do you mean by that?
I'm just saying whether or not that's something that maybe should be reviewed with the towns before, you know, anything is ever voted on in terms of whether or not it's going to be a new combined region.
Yeah.
That's all.
Well, as I'm sure you appreciate, we've spent the last, I don't know, nine months going section by section through that regional agreement, because there are lots of components of it. So, for example, school committee governance is part of that regional agreement. And we spent several planning board... spent several planning board meetings talking about those provisions and coming to agreement on those provisions. And we certainly had input from all the eight towns. Our 24-member board has three representatives from each of the towns, and they're all talking to their select boards and their finance committees. Some of them are members of the select boards and finance committees. So there is a lot of discussion going on about those provisions as we address them in a serial fashion at the planning board meeting. So I, I guess I, I would, I view it as a document that has been developing in an iterative way with lots of town input on each provision, including, including from Renee Wood, who sent two very detailed sets of comments on the regional agreement, and those comments are considered and incorporated into our discussions.
Okay, do we have any other questions?
I just have one suggestion. I understand from yesterday's email from Jake that we're going to revote at our next meeting, just a procedural issue. Given the fact I had coffee with someone yesterday who said, oh, no, that had nothing, because I said, well, it impacts our operating budget. And she said, no, it had nothing to do with operating budget. Now, you said it definitely did mean we approved the operating budget as well.
It's not a budget, Bonnie, if I can just jump in here. The finance subcommittee recommendation
The methodology.
Includes methodologies for operating costs and capital costs, and capital costs include capital costs for the high school and capital costs for other, right?
I meant the word methodology.
Okay, yeah.
My only suggestion is if at the next meeting, I mean, you live this, breathe this every day, if we could have a slide.
Yeah, definitely. I think it's a great suggestion. And what I'm hoping we'll have for the next meeting is actually language.
Yes, okay.
Right, the language that will get popped into that draft regional agreement. So we can put that up. We can have the graphic slide that, you know, sort of repeats what was presented on April 11th, but simplified. And then we can have the actual language, Bonnie, and that's what I'm hoping we'll be able to get to our planning board members before Tuesday, is the draft language, so there's no confusion as to how the capital costs are going to be assessed, how the capital costs for the high school are going to be assessed, how the capital costs for other things will be assessed. But yes, that is the plan.
Okay, good, because she was convinced, no operation, clearly it was. Well, thank you very much.
You're very welcome. Thanks for the time tonight.
Sure. Have a good evening.
Thanks.
And it's still hot out there. All right, do we have any other member town issues? Anyone else on the regional planning board who want to comment in any way?
No, I wasn't able to either last night because I'm working.
Okay, we don't, all right, in that case, we'll move on to the chairman's report. Just a couple of things. One, with our, having this wonderful season of graduation, number of you were able to be at our great awards ceremony yesterday with so many of our students who are graduating, receiving, a couple who received like 18 credit, college credits.
We had one with 30.
One with 30. So awarded college credit, awarded, receiving so many different awards. They, the parents were, were in family. It was great. It was a great event. We'll only come in second to Saturday morning, which will be, they're present, what a great group. And they were happy, and these kids who lived the whole pandemic. A reminder, because I made a bit of mistake here, the seventh is not the eighth. We're getting together with Dorothy Presser. It's, the plan is if it's 90 million degrees, it will take part, take place in the Eagles' Loft, planning a robust program for us. And I'm so, Beth said today, on the seventh.
At what time, six to nine?
From the seventh.
In the evening?
From six to nine.
Okay.
Yeah, it's, that's, that part's always been right.
It's on the seventh.
It's on the seventh, seven, 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 seven.
At six, 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 six.
At six, 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 six. And I am so happy that we arranged, well, I should say Beth helped arrange there. The culinary students have put together the menu for our dinner, which will be prepared by our food services.
And them.
And, and the students. And the students will be involved in the presenting and serving of our dinner. I, I think we'll have a, a really good meeting. I really hope so. Come energized and ready to work. And Liz LaFond, who several of you know, is going to be joining Dorothy for the session. And they're traveling from the other end of the state, so I think it will, it's much appreciated. And I just want to tell you one other thing. A parent whose child won one of the Rotary scholarships was at the Rotary luncheon yesterday, and he told me, our kids totally did us proud. As opposed to other places, all of our kids showed up. They were all dressed completely appropriately. They engaged with the members of the Rotary. And the person who spoke on behalf of the Rotary talked about how happy she was to see certain students who had been involved in planting with our pollinator garden. And she went through how excited the Rotary is to be working with, interact at our school. And it, it was nice to have an independent person speaking about what's going on. For those of you who may not know it, one of the nicest things that happens in the year is tomorrow morning at eight o'clock, our seniors in their caps and gowns walk through the entire, this campus. They don't go over to New Marlboro or to Egremont. And all the kids come out in the halls to cheer them on. And it's actually beautiful, and the kids loved it. So I think we're up to five years of doing it, and I'm so glad that Jesse is making this happen. And you're welcome to come. You can't march with the kids, but you could watch them. So, and Saturday morning is the graduation. And there are a few other things we'll talk, I'll save her when we get to the items. So that's it. Turning it over to Beth for the superintendent's report.
Sure. So one of the things I wanted to share is we have decided that we would like to have a retirement celebration. We have four, five people who are planning to retire, and we thought that it would be nice to do a little ceremony to celebrate them. And so we're hoping to do that at 5:30 before the school committee meeting on June 15th. So we've invited the, the members who are retiring. We have a small gift for them. We just want to recognize them and say a few words, and, and hopefully, members of the committee can be there to help us celebrate. I'm sure they're going to be doing all sorts of fun dances. It'll be before our next school committee meeting, it'll be June 15th, wherever we are. So we'll see how the weather is. We're going to see how the weather is, and we're going to decide, yeah. I mean, typically, it would be in the, in the library, but if, if it's not, we might find another zippy location, yeah. So we're going to do that, which we're excited about. We, I think I have mentioned to you that we, with our partners from Simon's Rock, had applied for the Transcend grant, which is a, a grant where it's an opportunity for rural school communities to participate in a 10-month cohort program that engages the communities in reimagining their school models, using the science of learning and innovative models from around the country. So we have made it to the final round of being selected, and that includes a site visit. So the folks from the grant are coming to Southern Berkshire, June 21st and 22nd. It's a day and a half visit. I don't have all the details as of yet, but a team of us will be meeting with their team Monday at 10 o'clock, and then I will fill people in. But this is a really community-oriented and a really exciting opportunity. So hopefully, we'll get all of you in to, to help us, show us off on the 21st and 22nd. So I'll keep you posted.
Just volunteer us.
Yes, yes. I'm going to volunteer all of you, too. So, yep.
You're better.
Yes. Right now, we're working on wrapping up our end-of-year grant reporting. We're, we have a Safe and Supportive Schools grant that we're working on, and our early college end-of-year report for sure. I'm sure there's other ones all across the district, but those, I, I was signing away on some things today. But why I wanted to bring that up is in the summer, when we talk about our summer meetings, one of them should include our safety and security review for the year in executive session. So just keep that in mind for the summer, and that would include members of our district-wide safety team, and that would be an update for the full committee. And of course, as Bonnie said, we're getting to the end and our end-of-year events with, with graduation. Of course, I'm working on my speech as well. And every once, every few years, I interview students, and I'm not going to tell you what some of their fabulous answers are. But as always, they're super entertaining. But I, I did want to point out that one of the things I noticed, because I haven't done it in about four years, well, first of all, they couldn't get over the chairs in my office. They really thought that was what, what it means to be big, and they really loved those chairs. But they were priceless. But they said, when I asked them four years ago what it may, meant to graduate and what they were going to do after graduation, there was a lot of silence, a lot of, you know, not sure and very entertaining responses. But this year, when I asked them what they were going to do, all five of them said that they were going to college. And I said, because I didn't want it to be something leading at all about that, I said, well, what else could you do? And they said, well, we could definitely get a job and we could, we could work, but first, we're going to go to college. And I just think that's such a really interesting shift in, you know, they're five, when you're talking to them. So it's really interesting of, of what people are thinking about as far as education and the importance of it. So I just thought that was something worthy of noting. But, but I'm saving all the good stuff for, for the morning, so we'll see. That's all.
Thank you so much. Any questions for Beth?
Yes, Carl.
Madam Superintendent, I see that, as it has since I rejoined the school committee in last November, listed as a future agenda item is guidance and college report. I have brought, now it's a future, future agenda item, the seniors are graduating in a day and a half. I have mentioned it several times.
It's on the June 15th, and that's, we said we were not going to interfere with guidance. So if you look at the year-long schedule that I gave to the school committee, it was to be determined in, and it was in the June area.
Is there any reason why any member of the school committee, any, any teacher, any member of the public who gains admittance to the school can walk down the hallway from the, from the high school principal's office and see a board listing the members of the senior class, where they are, what they are doing, whether they are going to be pursuing a career objective, whether they're going to go to a two-year college or a four-year college? Now, a day and a half before graduation, why the community can't know that by having a report from the school committee? Why do they have to come to the school to learn that information? If I were a person who thought cynically about life, I would say that there was, and I'm not one of those people, although some people may disagree with me, but, but I would say that there is a reluctance on the part of the administration to, I don't know why there's a reluctance, there shouldn't be, but, but why can't that information be made public? In fact, why can't a document show, listing its public knowledge because it's posted in the high school? Why can't there be a document as a substitute for doing the report after it's outdated? Why couldn't that have been attached to any, to, to the last school committee meeting as a document? I don't know what the answer, I don't think there's a good answer to it, but I'd be interested to know what the answer is, what the administration's answer is.
Sure. So I, I guess, Carl, I don't have any objection to any of that other than just time and events. So we put it, we, we space it out. Guidance is very involved in end-of-year activities and all the way through. So we were just, I don't, I don't think it matters personally whether we talk about where students chose to go or where they get into, whether it happens a day and a half before graduation or in 10 more days. I don't think it changes anything, but it, there's no, no one has any interest in hiding any information. We love to share all of that. It's just a matter of timing and when the number of bodies that we have can prepare the information in an appropriate way.
That, that information, but, but, but Beth, that information's been prepared. It's posted in a hallway of the school. Now, I don't think it would take any more time to take that information, whoever compiled that information, presumably the guidance office, and had, and attach it to this, as, as an exhibit to this school committee or the prior one. It's been up there for a while.
Carl, just to add, one, in the program for the awards recipients, the college acceptances are listed in the program. In the graduation program, there is, you know, for everyone who's there at Tanglewood, there is a list of the option, what students are doing. It'll say, it says where, what they're doing and where they're going. It also changes with last-minute openings in terms of additional scholarship money. So I personally brought this up as a former college advisor and wanting to know more information earlier. And I think it, there are two factors. One, the information changes. Two, the information is published. It is out there, and it appears in, in several documents. So anybody at all, it's not being hidden from anyone.
So how does, how does the parent of, or parents, Pearl, of sophomores who presumably don't attend, although some of them may, who don't attend the graduation, get a copy of that document? How do they even know that it exists?
So.
If we were so interested in having this information public, we'd make it easily accessible, not accessible with difficulty.
So here's, here's another thing I would say. We made a schedule for the beginning of the year with proposed different topics to discuss that was approved by the school committee. I know you weren't on it at the time. No one has any issue with, if you'd like the guidance report to be earlier in the year, we can move it next year to earlier in the year, but that's how the schedule was laid out. So this isn't any change to anything. If you wanted a specific report like that, which I think you would ask for a, a much broader group of information, you know, that, that could have been accomplished. So I don't think, but, but as far as a comprehensive guidance report, that was always scheduled for June.
I, I, just as a suggestion.
There's other people.
Oh, go please.
That board that Carl mentioned is actually a list for students of where they've gotten accepted, not where they chose to attend yet.
That's not accurate, actually.
Oh, my God. Oh, my gosh. Yes, it is.
No, because where they choose to attend is marked with, by a star.
Then that was a recent update.
Well, I, I.
Because I've seen that board multiple, multiple times.
Well, you threw your hands up, but the fact is that it's accurate, that it shows where they're going to school by a star next to the school they're going to.
My suggestion is, because we've got a lot to do here.
David has a question, Bonnie.
That we just ask Jesse maybe in one of his closing communications to send out, because it goes to all the parents. I love the newsletter. And if it's okay that he sends out a list. And I think it's a good idea, truthfully, as Carl mentioned, that our families see where our children, what our children are doing.
But don't the parents and the students have to agree?
Oh, yes.
Yeah, so it's not something you can just release without them agreeing.
Well, it's released in a lot of places. It's, it, once it is appearing in the, in the program for Saturday morning.
Right.
So, I mean, Jesse knows enough that he wouldn't be violating anything. And it's a way to get the information out to the fam, yes. Go ahead, David.
I was going to ask this before, but Bonnie echoed my thought. The, this information is being made public. Have the students consented explicitly? Have their parents consented? Have this information made public? Or is it simply a rule of what happened with the students? Because it's very important that we preserve the students' privacy. And if this is just, if they haven't explicitly consented, that's a problem.
I guarantee that whatever is done, Jesse Carpenter will do it with the interest of protecting any issues related to privacy of families and students. So you can rest assured that he's not going to say Bonnie Silvers is going to John Doe University because she can't afford to go anywhere else. It will, I, I am going to respect, assume that we can respect our superintendent and our administration to do this in a manner that's appropriate.
I, I think that parents at the beginning of the year, for things they don't want released, both publicly, like photos, documentation, things like that.
Right, they, they put that.
Fill out a form so they're removed from that.
Yes.
Media.
That is.
I sign one every year for my children, whether I want or want, don't want their information in public documents thrown around the district or published in the papers or stuff like that. So each year in that packet.
For any of you who don't, who don't have children in the district, it's part of the handbook. And it is the document that us, parents must sign the document at the beginning of the year. Carl, and can we move on after your comment, please?
I, I, David made an interesting comment. But, but, but I don't know what he's thinking about when he says that, that a matter of public record that is not protected by some state or federal law is, is, is subject to a privacy right. I mean, I'd like to know if he has something in mind that protects that so-called privacy right, because I don't see it. In any event, it's been breached because the school has published it already. So it no longer exists, but I don't think it ever existed.
And, and we cover what could be released at the beginning of the year with a document that is signed by the legal guardian or the parent. Okay. Can we move on now to curriculum and professional development? Julie?
Yes, I'm going to keep it short and sweet. You know that we purchased for K through five, a new reading program, Intu Reading. And last week, we had our first half day of professional development for our teachers with their new program, which they were very pleased to be getting it so far in advance before using it in the fall. We're also going to have another full day PD and for virtual coaching sessions for them before they even leave the building at the end of the year. So that is going well. We are providing a graduate course to our teachers for math this summer. We're currently trying to figure out with the staff the week that's best for them. It's probably going to be August. It's going to be held on campus. And through grant funding, we're able to offer the course for free to the teachers for them to get PDPs if they choose to get the graduate credits. They'll have to pay a small fee to actually get the graduate credits. But we're really excited to post COVID, be finally bringing back some in-person graduate courses to our faculty.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Sandy, Director of Student Services.
Hi, good evening. I have a couple of things that I'd like to share. One is that United Way of Mass Bay is wanting to partner with us again for the Summer Step Up Grant. So that is supporting summer programming for our pre-K to grade two students, which is fabulous. They've done that the past two years. And they reached out to us. And I was in a focus group the other day, and they reached out. And we're going to be getting some funds again this year for that. So that's terrific. And that will also support some of our work with Flying Cloud that will take place in the afternoon. Part of that grant is to focus on collaboration with local agencies. So we've had a partnership with Flying Cloud for a long time, but for our summer program for the past couple of years, and we'll get to do that again this year. The other thing I wanted to mention tonight is earlier today, we, the administration got to go visit our PACE program, which is our program for academic and community engagement. It's a secondary program and it's focused on supporting students who have some social, emotional needs. And we were able to meet with a couple of students who came in and talked about their experience in the program. But the classroom teacher, Elise Mercier, had us do some activities. First off, you need to walk in her room at some point because she has lavender being diffused and, you know, the low lighting and bean bags. And you just feel better as soon as you walk in the room. But some of the activities she did were really great to show us how we can work together to kind of calm ourselves and identify how we're feeling. And maybe at some point, we could have her join us. And it might be a, a nice addition to a night here at school committee, having everybody feel a little bit connected. I'll have her bring the lever. She gave us all essential oil balms afterward.
I'm into lavender and bean bags.
So anyway, I'd like to talk about these wonderful programs we have. So that's it for tonight. Thank you.
Okay, thank you so much. Moving on to new business. We are, on this first item, we are not taking a vote tonight. But we are going to hear on the solar energy power purchase agreement and lease. Beth, would you do the introductions here?
Sure. So Andreas Schmidt is here today, and we have a PowerPoint. He's going to go over a presentation as to where we stand right now with our proposed solar project. And, and then we'll have a discussion. Hi, Andreas, welcome.
Hey, thank you. Can you all hear me okay?
Yes.
Yep.
Yes.
Great, thank you. Well, nice to meet you all. I'm Andreas Schmidt. I live in Lenox. I, I have a lot of connections with the Southern Berkshire Regional School District. And went to Monument myself. And really happy to be working with you all on this project. We're, we're in the final stages of moving it forward. I don't know if you're aware or where we're at with it. But ultimately, Select Energy is the winner of the Power Options procurement. Power Options is a nonprofit, an energy buying consortium that serves about 500 members across Massachusetts, all state entities, municipalities, school districts, schools, universities. And, and that procurement is, is run every couple of years for electricity, gas, commodity purchases, as well as solar energy. Select is the chosen vendor after an RFP was run against a dozen or so other vendors. And that procurement for Power Options members satisfies all public procurement requirements. We can provide more information on that if you'd like. But just know that you don't have to run your own RFP. That was already done. A couple of years ago, I started talking with Jeremy Wells about a project. There were some problems with credits that were being received on, on the school's bill. This is for, for the Mount Albert Regional School. There was an excess of credit on that bill from Solar Farms. And I helped Jeremy figure out how to reallocate credits and actually get concurrent billing of the supply and delivery on the national grid bill to use up that credit. After about a year, it was determined that there was some remaining bill that would be able to be covered with an onsite solar project on the roof. Rooftop solar is great. Select Energy is the top rooftop commercial solar installer and operations maintenance service provider in the state. We've done five times more commercial rooftops than our next provider. Currently with the Power Options program, installed solar on 150 municipality and school district roofs. We've done 29 solar projects alone for Harvard University, and they're no easy customer to work for. We're really good at what we do. We take great pride in what we do. We're very careful about making sure we don't void roof warranties. We have the warranty paperwork. We know the process we need to follow to maintain that warranty. We've, at our expense and our risk, under the terms of a Power Options letter of intent that was signed last year, we've completed due diligence on, on the roof roof structure. We've gotten a third-party structural engineer to come in and evaluate all 11 roof areas that we're intending to install solar on. We've gotten utility approval for the project, going through, unfortunately, an expensive impact study as they required additional study for the project, but that's complete. We know our costs to interconnect the system. So all of that is accounted for and in the numbers that we'll review here. So Beth, if you can move on to the next slide. This is the system design. It specifically works around all of the vents and rooftop units and drains and things that you'll need to maintain over time with technicians. Provides OSHA compliant access to all those areas of the roof that will need ongoing maintenance. Flashing around those vents and drains and rooftop units will be, will be easy to access for a roofer to reflash those areas. You have a, a new roof. It's five years old. The agreement would be for 20 years. Ultimately, a TPO membrane roof could last easily 30 or more years with regular maintenance. And there is plenty of access for that regular maintenance here. And again, we wouldn't void the warranty on the roof. We'd work with the roof membrane manufacturer and your roofer to maintain that warranty. And we're specifically avoiding areas of the roof where you're going to be doing work on your new HVAC unit that's going to be installed, kind of on the bottom left there. So this system will cover potentially, it looks like 100% of your remaining spend on your bill after you've allocated the net metering credits from the Solar Farms that you've subscribed to. So, you know, with this system installed, you'll be 100% covered with solar energy, which is a really, I think, a proud thing to, you know, something to be really proud of for the district. Keep in mind that, you know, you mentioned, someone mentioned earlier a partnership with Simon's Rock. We installed all the solar on the Simon's Rock roofs. They're very happy with it. Southern Berkshire Regional, excuse me, Southern Berkshire Regional Community Center, we installed on. Tanglewood Lindy Center, we're working on the shed now, believe it or not. We're looking at solar for the shed. And a lot of other, a lot of other schools, of course, around Massachusetts. Richmond Consolidated School comes to mind as one of the local schools here. So, you know, I think this is, this is not new territory. We know we can do this product safely with no detrimental effects to building roof structure, the roof membrane and so, so forth. So with, with all the interconnection costs, structural inspections and all the costs of that accounted for, and a turnkey installation that we would ultimately own and manage and operate, the, the numbers on the next slide account for all that, with all that taken into account. This, this is the savings summary for the project without prevailing wage. The next slide shows the savings summary with prevailing wage labor accounted for. So of course, prevailing wage makes the project a bit more expensive. But, you know, not, not impossible. You still save quite a bit of money. You see there, you're currently paying, actually, I think you're paying more than this now because of, or you will shortly, because the new supply rate is being negotiated. But using the most recent supply rate that I saw, you're currently paying 13.56 cents per kilowatt hour for power. And that rises at an average 2% annually. Aside from last year, where power rates rise, rose 50 to 100%. And for the last 10 years, aside from 2022 and that anomaly, huge rise in power rates, Massachusetts commercial rates have risen at an average 2% annually for the past 10 years. So that's the number we use here in our model. We assume that power inflation, utility rate inflation will continue at about 2% annually. Whereas our rate is fixed. Power options in terms of our RFP, our winning the RFP are that you get a fixed rate for 20 years. So you're signing on to purchase power from the system at, at a fixed rate for 20 years. Makes it easy for budgeting, and you know exactly what you're getting for 20 years. So in this case, with prevailing wage, it's nine cents and change, 9.15 cents. And without prevailing wage, it's 7.2 cents. The reason we're showing both is because we're in final negotiations with your general counsel, your, your, your school district counsel, Nancy Campani. And Beth has been involved with those negotiations on the, the final power purchase agreement documents. She still has a question as to whether or not prevailing wage may or may not be required. And we won't get into that here, but she's checking into it. And ultimately, we'll decide whether or not she thinks the Department of Labor Services in Massachusetts, Department of Revenue requires that you have prevailing wage. Keep in mind, most of the projects that we do for municipalities, public entities, school districts, they've determined that prevailing wage is not required because they're not going to own the system. You are not going to own the system. But some districts, some towns determine or decide that they want to go with prevailing wage. So there's both options here. We can go either way. Everything else that Nancy is requiring in terms of commercial terms that would affect the, the power purchase agreement rate are accounted for thus far. There's a few open items remaining in, in that negotiation. And I'm sure we can get past those and, and come to agreement on the final terms for the power purchase agreement. There's also a lease of the roof involved, which we've done with many, many school districts around the state. Mohawk Trail Regional School District comes to mind recently. The, the project for Richmond Consolidated School. We just need access to the roof to, to maintain the equipment and, and access to the equipment primarily. And, and so the, the lease of, of the roof is what enables that. That's the instrument that enables that. So two documents, power purchase agreement and a lease. And, and we're close to finalizing the terms on both of those. I, I guess, if you think that these savings for both options look attractive with and without prevailing wage, I guess lowest, lowest common denominator here is that your savings over 20 years is estimated at almost $600,000 for the district. So it averages $30,000 a year or so without prevailing wage. If you want to scroll back to, to that savings summary. Thank you. It's over $730,000. So, you know, an average $36,000 a year or so without, without prevailing wage labor being required. So, you know, ultimately, you know, we, we think that this is a great project in terms of what, what kind of savings it will deliver to the district. it will deliver to the district. Next steps, as shown here, the letter of intent was signed in June last year. We've secured the state incentives. The SMART program, the Solar Massachusetts Renewable Target Program, has granted us a preliminary statement of qualification. They will give us the full statement of qualification unless the project is built. We have to have the project built by early next year or that incentive goes away. Utility interconnection approval is in place. We completed an IMPACT study, and we have to pay National Grid or that Interconnection Service Agreement fee, $9,266, by June 16th in order to keep the Interconnection Service Agreement for this project. We're ready and willing to pay that as long as we have a positive indication that you, the school committee, is going to move this project forward. We're diligently working with Beth and Nancy Campani to finalize the terms of the agreement and the lease as described. So that's the next step. Again, we've completed the structural engineering that's done. With the structural engineering affidavit letter, stamped affidavit letter, we can apply for the building permit, which is a formality, as long as we're showing that we're meeting code requirements, which we do. We can apply for the electrical permit, and we just have to show we're meeting code requirements, the utility already approved, our interconnection, single line, electrical drawings and so forth. So that's already done. Just a couple of formalities, the electrical building permit that we would apply for. Solar is by right on rooftops in Massachusetts, so there will be no issue there. So we just need to negotiate and execute the PPA and lease agreement. And then we'll coordinate with you all and with your facilities director to install the system this summer. When the kids are out of school, it makes it really easy, although we're very adept at working in complex operational environments. We installed all the projects at Harvard when school was in session, working around the teachers and students. We're good at it, and we know how to stay out of people's way and keep everything safe and OSHA compliant. So we would have pre-construction meetings to coordinate all of that as needed, but hopefully it's a little easier if we do the project this summer. And then we could have the project operational this fall when the students come back to school. Project schedule would be determined at that time. We'd get it in our project schedule, and we'd coordinate with our project managers. We do everything in-house, by the way. Select has 95 employees that just live and breathe solar every day. We have our own designers, engineers, project managers, 20 licensed electricians, and a whole team that does the ongoing operations and maintenance, a couple of analysts that monitor systems 24/7 and dispatch our service team as needed. We do annual preventive maintenance and inspections, so we would schedule that with your facilities director for every year to just check the system yearly and make sure it's safe and operating optimally and delivering the savings that we promised. Some of the value involved here, there's no RFP because Power Options has already done the RFP. There's no capital required. You don't pay for any maintenance or insurance on the system. And this is renewable energy going directly into the building. There's potential for additional savings on your demand charges, which you don't get from solar farm and metering credit purchases with solar on the roof and going directly into the building from the system. It's likely that often we will offset your demand charges. We can't represent that as guaranteed because it could change monthly. If the sun's not shining when you're hitting your peak demand 15 minutes for the month, which is how they bill you, then we can't, we won't offset your demand charges. But some months we may, in addition to the sun savings that we're representing here in the savings summary. You do get web-based and project monitoring access, so teachers and students can access how the system's performing and use that as a teaching tool. And there's curriculum that can be developed around that to study math and science and business and energy markets and things like that. So the educational opportunity is real. As you desire, we could do ribbon cuttings and help you develop curriculum, do sessions with students. We do this with a lot of schools that we work with. So a lot of benefit there on top of just the savings. So that's my take. What questions do you all have?
All right. Questions here?
I have one.
I'm looking to see, there may be... Okay, we'll start with Carl.
What if your projections about National Grid rates are wrong? And in fact, they get lower? And in fact, seven years down the road, just pick a number at random. National Grid rates are lower than yours, so in fact, the cost of the solar array from you is more, results in a loss over the comparable service provided by National Grid. Is there, for example, have you ever built into a contract that if that happens, we can renegotiate the rate with you mid-contract?
No, no. In order for the project to be financeable, ultimately, there has to be stability in the rate, and that's why we provide a 20-year fixed rate. I think you'll find that the rate is low enough that it's very unlikely that the utility rates will drop below our rate in terms of a combined supply and delivery rate. Most renegotiated supply rates today, and keep in mind, your current supply rate is at about 10 cents a kilowatt hour, nine or 10. When you renegotiate that rate, it's likely to go to 14. And again, rates have gone up in Massachusetts with inflation because the utilities have to maintain the utility lines, and the cost of doing so always goes up. The cost of labor goes up, the cost of metals and wire and so forth go up, the cost of fuel goes up, the cost of healthcare goes up, so forth. So ultimately, for 30 years, we've seen rates go up consistently. So I mean, it's up to you to determine if you think that rates could possibly go down below what we're proposing as a fixed rate, but I would suggest they wouldn't. I've been in this business 14 years. Rates have gone up every year. And ultimately, for the past 10 years, they've averaged 2% a year until last year, when they went up 50 to 100% in Massachusetts. But prior to 10 years ago, rates were going up at an average 4% a year. And you can find that information on the Energy Information Agency's data that they publish regularly, specifically for Massachusetts commercial utility rates, if you'd like to look that up, sir.
Okay, thank you. Oh, all right.
What if National Grid sells to somebody?
I'm sorry, what was that?
What if National Grid sells to somebody else?
That would not affect this agreement in any way, shape or form. If National Grid, as your utility provider, is bought by somebody else, then you're just avoiding utility costs or saving on an electric bill that comes from somebody else. It really has no effect on this.
I just want to confirm what you said. We do not have to hire any additional staff in terms of maintaining. You are doing the maintenance on a regular basis, and you have regular repair people on staff. So there's no impact on our need for hiring?
That's correct. Absolutely correct. Yeah, we take care of it all. We pay all capital costs to design and get all the utility, you know, all the regulatory approvals, as I described, and build the system. And we ensure the system, and we operate and maintain it all with our own staff. We also finance the system ourselves. And in addition to the power purchase agreement payments, we receive the state incentive payments and the tax credit that we're able to utilize. So that's all factored into the end result, the power purchase agreement rate. So all that maintenance and everything that we need to do to deliver power to you at the agreed-upon rate is factored into that rate.
And do you, in addition, provide whatever necessary training for our staff so they, no one winds up accidentally causing a problem? I'm the...
Absolutely. Yeah, with every project, once we complete it, we conduct what's called a transition meeting, and we provide an operations manual for the system, which includes all of the system details, the equipment spec sheets, the permits, the utility approval documentation, the as-built system design, the single line electrical engineer drawings, as well as all of Select's service team contact information, my contact information, emergency contact information, and the login information for the monitoring system, so you can have access to that. And we would go over that with anyone from the district that wanted to be involved, usually the facilities manager, maybe the principal, any interested teachers or other staff, school committee members. We would do that with myself, the project manager who managed building the project, and a service team representative from Select.
So there isn't a chance, there's a blizzard, and our facilities management group is cleaning up everything. They will know what to do not to cause a problem?
Absolutely. Yeah, we'll have very detailed instructions for them in cases they see anything that doesn't look right with the system, or unless, or if they by chance cause a problem or something like that. It's pretty rare, but if you had, you know, someone doing maintenance up on the roof, cleaning drains or something, or if you had a rooftop unit, HVAC technician up on the roof, and they dropped a tool on a panel and cracked a panel, you'll know exactly who to call and what to do. So it's all quite safe, you know, all following OSHA guidelines, National Electrical Code guidelines. So we generally don't see major issues with systems. But you'll know what to do if there is something that happens.
Okay. I just was looking to make sure we avoid costs that are not necessary.
Oh, yeah, yeah. There would be no additional costs with any of that. Anything that would be your responsibility, though, would be spelled out in the power purchase agreement. Nancy Campani, your counsel, is being very good at protecting your interests.
She is.
Making sure you don't have any additional costs. She's a tough negotiator, so she's doing a good job for you.
Thank you very much. All right, with that, David, the last one?
Just a quick question. You mentioned that multiple people could have access to a web portal to see the details about how the system is performing. Would each individual user have their own individual login information?
No, it's just a general login. Essentially, you're just getting on a website, and you could provide a link to that monitoring platform on your website, your district website. You could provide it to anybody you want to, and they can log in as desired. You can set that up in different ways to show different data, how many trees you're offsetting in terms of carbon emissions, how many trees it equates to planting, how many cars taken off the road and equates to do, things like that. You could even set it up, say, in your lobby on a screen so that it refreshes every 15 minutes and shows system performance on that screen. It's as simple as just setting up a smart TV on the wall and having it permanently logged into that website. So we do that quite often for companies and schools that want to show off the solar on the roof that you wouldn't otherwise see, because this system won't be seen from the ground. It's very low profile. It only sticks up off the roof about nine inches and therefore couldn't be seen from the ground. So if you want to show folks that you have solar on the roof and show it off a little, you might want to consider publishing that link to the monitoring website or putting it on a monitor in your lobby or something like that.
Just quickly, yes, I think we'd probably love that, but nobody can sabotage it in any way, some random person?
Well, I suppose there's always that chance if someone has the ability to get up on the roof. That's why I love rooftop systems. I've been in this industry a long time, and for a while I was doing solar farms. Sorry, go ahead.
No, go ahead, you're...
Oh, I'm... Okay, I was just going to say, I worked on it up until about six years ago, working with a company that did a lot of solar farms, systems on the ground. You know, you see a lot of these around Berkshire County. With that company, I was involved with the solar project in Guido's in Great Barrington. You see the ground out there where they have the sheep grazing around. At a project some years ago, some kids were throwing rocks at the panels. Actually, this was at the system by Silver Lake in Pittsfield. You might be familiar with it. Western Mass Electric owns that system. And kids from the neighborhood decided they wanted to hear the glass breaking, and they threw rocks and broke something like 20 panels. We generally don't ever see that with the rooftop system on a flat roof, up high, out of sight, out of mind. No one notes it's there. But if someone were up on the roof and decided they wanted to do something to the system, I suppose they could break a panel. It's very hard to pull out wiring because it's very securely fastened and inside electrical metal tubing, EMT as we call it. So kind of hard to sabotage a system. We do have to provide a disconnect switch that shuts the entire system down at ground level per National Electrical Code and Fire Code requirements. We have to leave that accessible at all times to the fire department and the utility in case there's a fire in the building or something that requires that the utility shut down the power and the solar along with it. They have to be able to access that, and we have to put it near your existing utility meter. So they would always have access to get to the system to shut that off. That's typically in an out-of-the-way place. It's nondescript. It's next to the existing utility meter, typically not somewhere that's easily seen or accessible by the general public. But the utility has to know that it's there and that it's accessible for us to meet their requirements and code requirements. So I suppose someone could shut the system down, but that wouldn't cause harm. We would see it immediately in our monitoring, and we'd ask someone at school to, we'd call you, ask someone at school to check on the system and maybe just turn it back on, or we'd send someone out to do that.
Yeah, mine was more online, could they do anything? But I'm going to let instead Dennis close us out on this.
Well, I don't know whether I'm going to, I don't mean to try to close us out, but basically I have a three-peer solar array, okay? And which I've had for, you know, I can't even remember how many years now. And one of the things I'm curious about is, in this event, we're talking about having panels on the top of a building. And one of the problems that I've never had, you know, in my system is that basically, you know, I have to manually tip that thing every so often, you know? It's a seasonal thing, you know? I'm sure you're aware of what I'm talking about.
Yeah, exactly.
And basically, because of that, you know, I don't have a problem with snow. You know, the snow just slides off of it. And I'm just kind of curious about, with this flat panel array on the roofs, is that something that the snow, do we have to, like, send people up there with brooms and stuff to...
No, no. We don't want anyone touching the system. We won't be out there. We won't be out there shoveling snow off the system. We've accounted for production losses from things like snow sitting on the panels in the winter and dust and pollen sitting on the panels in the spring and summer and fall between rain events. Right now, there's a lot of pollen sitting on panels because we haven't had rain for weeks, and there's been a lot of pollen. So, you know, we factor that in to our production models. We're pretty accurate with our production models. We assume we're never going to shovel panels off or clean them off, and that's safer. You know, the less people... And that's safer, we, you know, the less people get up on the roof, the better, the less people are around our panels with shovels, the better. And, and so we, we just factor that in, so that we don't have to pay the cost of that maintenance, or, or incur the, the safety issues around that. And, and our, our production modeling is very accurate. We, we not only, like I said, engineer and build systems, we also monitor and maintain them long-term, so we've seen how systems perform over time relative to the estimated production that, that we had initially modeled. And we've adjusted our production modeling to be more and more accurate over the years. And, and so this past year, we did a full study on our fleet of, of 700 systems, 130 megawatts projects that we manage and maintain and monitor around the state. And we were, our production, actual production versus estimated was at 99.54 percent. And that's without shoveling, without cleaning, so, yeah.
Well, you're, you're clearly very passionate about it, and I appreciate the, the report and the information. I guess I'll turn you and Beth, next steps for us, because we are not voting this evening.
Right, so Nancy, who Andrea said is, is, would like the opportunity to speak to the committee on a few items prior to us voting, so we may want to consider gathering or giving her a few minutes, either prior to the next school committee meeting, so we can make a decision, and/or definitely at the next school committee meeting, because it needs to be an executive session discussion. So, that's our next steps.
Right. Okay.
So I'll connect with her and see if we can find an agreeable time.
Andreas, thank you very much.
Yeah, my pleasure. I would just make one request relative to the deadline of, or June 16th, for us to make that payment to National Grid. If, if we could make an effort to be at a point at which you could make a vote on the 15th, or preferably prior to the 15th, Beth described that you have your next meeting on the 15th. You know, we don't need to necessarily have signed documents in place. We're gonna make an effort to have finalized documents that are ready for signature by the 15th, so that Nancy and Beth, and hopefully the whole school committee is satisfied with, with the agreement and, and the lease document. But I would ask that, that the school committee make a vote, and, and hopefully it's a positive vote, and that will give Select the, the assurance that the project is going to move forward so that we can pay, pay that $9,266 with some confidence. We've already spent $25,000, I'll note, in developing this project at no cost or risk to the school district. So, you know, that's all on us. But we'd rather not spend another $9,266 if we don't have to. So, please let us know what you need from us to give us an up or down vote by the 15th.
Thank you. I think the, the game plan is we expect to hear from Nancy, and I'll offer within the next few days, and then even if we have to schedule it as a complete Zoom meeting, maybe we'll be able to fit in another meeting.
Okay, great. And, yeah, I mean, let me know when, when you're scheduling that vote. I'd be happy to come in person and meet with you all in, in person, and, and talk with you about the final terms and conditions and so forth, and, and hopefully that's all agreed on by Nancy and Beth and, and all of you. So, thank you, thank you for your time.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Andreas.
Appreciate it.
Have a good night.
You too. Well, you're gonna have to go to the whole meeting to get there. Yes. Yes. Okay. All right, if you look at our agenda, there are some proposed dates for additional sort of summer meetings. Traditionally, we fit in at least these, you know, three meetings, an end of June 1, a July, or an August. Anyone have any preferences here, or know that they won't be available, or what the story is? Let's start with June 29th, is that a possibility? No?
I, I don't expect to be available on that.
On the 29th?
I'm, I'm thinking I'm gonna be away.
Okay. Do we have any others who will not be available on the 29th?
I'll probably be away also.
Okay, that's two.
Not entirely sure, possibly.
Okay.
On the 29th, I don't, I don't know the exact schedule yet, and possibly they're away the 6th as well, in July.
Next, what, what, July 6th?
Potentially.
Okay, that's a definite July 6th?
Neither are definite. I don't know the exact schedule of the vacation.
So David, Dennis, and Kyle with a question mark on the 29th. Are you saying, I'm asking the, the three of you, are there other days that week that are a possibility, or you're gone?
For me, the, before the 27th, I could probably make work.
Okay, before the 27th? Dennis?
No, I mean, I'll, I'll be up at New Brunswick during that time.
Okay. But before, so in other words, how, how far?
Oh, like the middle of June would be okay.
Okay, well, we already have a meeting for the middle of June. Okay, anybody else in that period of time? All right, so if we could move it a couple of days up, David, you could do it. Kyle, do you know? Your situation?
Um, no.
Okay, well.
I just tried to look at it on the calendar.
All right, we'll, we'll try sending this out ahead of time. When we get to the 6th or the 20th, we know you're not around, David?
Uh, July shouldn't be a problem for me, on the 6th or the 20th. If, if more people would be available on the 6th and 20th, then maybe it makes sense to just skip the 29th and do the 6th and 20th.
Well, no, we usually try to get, you know, depending especially if we have some other things, we could skip if we need to. Anybody else who knows ahead of time?
I don't know, but I, I'm, I would rather do the 20th.
In July?
Yes.
I'll definitely be here this morning.
Okay, all right, so the 20th would work.
And in August.
And in August, what?
Good.
August is good. Anybody who knows August is gone for them? All right, I may be gone the 24th, but, all right, so it looks like we can work with these, it looks like we'll have a quorum.
Okay, so the only thing about August, I mean, typically we've been doing only one in July and one in August.
Right, yeah, not exactly.
The only, the only thing to consider in August is, A, I think possibly if this Transend grant goes through, that, and we had talked about it collectively as part of our goals, doing a wider discussion with our community around our future strategy. So we were thinking a time in August before everybody's back into school, doesn't have to be that date, but, you know, towards the end of August, and an earlier date in September would be a good date so that we can start the year with our goals.
All right, let's do this, since most of us don't know about these things, probably the best is keeping it in your head, not to be shocked if you get a note that we're planning on having a meeting. So that the plan is we'll get in the three. Yes, Carl?
It, it might make a bit more sense to, whatever those calendaring things are that I don't know the name of, but you
To Doodle it?
Yeah. You, this clearly, for people answering when they, if they are or are not available can be done by internet, by, by email without violating the open meeting law.
Exactly. I just wanted to get a sense and to get right now for the 29th, the fact is, we could move ahead.
Yeah.
And we'll definitely use Doodle to make a decision on it, or so, or email.
And we also have the other, Kim wanted to mention that we also have the request for the meeting before, if there is a vote on the potential merger, that we'd want to have that meeting scheduled 30 days before.
Yes, 30 days before.
Whatever, so I just wanted, that would have to get in the schedule also.
Right.
Bunny?
Yes.
Well, we don't need a, a separate third-party app, this Doodle thing, the, the email accounts have a built-in calendar application that can do all of this stuff.
Right.
And have it all in one place.
But all of us, I, I have found, do not have the same connections where I've gotten from people that, no, 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 I can't do it through, I can only do it through this list of, we'll, we'll get it done one way or another. I know what you're saying, but I know that there is a difference of, for example, it'll definitely go through on my phone, it won't go through on my Mac. And I, and I, so we'll do it one way or another, we'll find out. And just for the point that Kim had brought up, we had passed that when the, the regional, the new regional agreement is ready for potential vote, if we're at that point, that we had passed as a school committee at minimum of three days before to have a presentation. Okay, you have a calendar, we have a calendar here, just so that you are aware since like the next
Yes, 12C in your packet?
Yeah.
Last page, yeah.
The last page. This will include the school committee meetings, sort of in a brownish, whatever.
Supposed to be peach, but it comes out a little darker when you print it, so.
Well, it's also in the tack pack. So in peachy brown, you'll see the one we're meeting for school committees. And I don't expect you to tell me now what you're planning on doing on the 11th of April.
I can tell you. My son's turning 30 that day.
Okay, invite him to come to the school committee. All right, so you have that.
Do I have, do we have to vote?
Well, I think the, because it's the overall calendar, we probably do.
Well, these are just proposed, so I would ju, I don't know if you have to vote or not, but, but they, I think typically, these are modeled after where we have put them and where they're required based on the public hearing and the budget, you know, that, that kind of counting, so.
Okay, in that case, I'll, I'll accept the motion.
I, I move to accept the proposed school committee meeting dates for the next school year.
And the calendar. Because it includes vacations and half-days and all of that.
The calendar, is what you're talking about?
The calendar is presented.
Well, does the school committee control things like half-days? Isn't that within the
Well, we're approving what was done.
We're approving the calendar.
We're approving the calendar.
You, you've actually already approved the calendar, but so this is just the school thing?
Okay, we're just approving the school committee.
Yeah, that was my motion.
Okay, we have a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a second. Okay, David, you voted.
I abstained.
Okay, Nancy?
Yes.
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 I abstained.
Okay, and I'm a yes. That was an abstain, Kim?
Yeah.
Okay, so that's seven to two approving the school committee calendar.
It's proposed, so.
As proposed.
Yep.
Subject change.
Okay, obviously it's changed before, it will definitely get changed again. Okay, let's, we have any unfinished business, Beth?
I hope not, no.
Good, moving on to committee reports. Finance, Sarah's not here. Nancy?
Yeah, we are, the community meetings, the subcommittee is getting ready to redo, or to do a third newsletter that will be going out, hopefully right by the end of school or else early this summer. And I am reaching out to the Regional Planning Board's Subcommittee Outreach Subcommittee to set up dates for an open forum meeting, a community meeting, sometime in June.
That's it, I think.
Okay. Policy, Dennis?
Uh, not confirmed yet, but it looks like we're finally getting, I mean, the, the, the stuff has been updated now.
Good.
The, the, the thing that was hacked, so, you know, so we'll get started again pretty soon.
Poor Dennis has now rescheduled it like 20 times. Personnel and negotiations, I don't have anything. Buildings, grounds, and technology, art?
Nope.
Okay, Jim?
We need a motion
Right.
To have all of the evaluations, correct, into, into me by
Okay.
End of week?
The end of next week.
Right.
After we've had our seven, so that would be the 9th. Is that what you're asking for?
Yes, please.
Okay, do we have a second for that?
Second.
Thank you, Carl. All right, any discussion?
When is the 9th?
Friday, Friday the 9th. Okay, seeing none, I'll start here, Kim?
Yes.
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 Okay, Jim, obviously.
Yes.
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 And yes, all right, so the 9th, we have all the material, Beth, thank you for all that you there. Right, Carl?
Yeah, Lynette and I appear to have a disagreement, a friendly disagreement, I should add, about what executive minutes have been approved for release and which, if any, have not. And we exchanged emails earlier today, and I have to review her list, and so there may be, there may be no executive session minutes that have not been released. That's what Lynette claims. I disagree, but I could be wrong. So after I've reviewed that, within the next day or so, I will either schedule a subcommittee meeting, or I will not, because there's nothing to discuss.
All right, should there be nothing to discuss, would you just let the members of the committee know?
Right, I will.
That you've confirmed.
I will.
Okay, thank you. All right, the curriculum subcommittee, actually Nancy and I had a very informative morning with our curriculum director, and learned a lot about that, the procedures in place. And, but what, the only thing I wanted to report on is, especially given the time, is I was shown by our superintendent and our director how incredible educating our Eagles is. I knew it was something that was there, but I would like, just for the fact, I mean, for you to be able to enjoy this, I'm asking Chris to show you just how easy it is and how wonderful it is to go on to see educating our Eagles.
Uh, yes, real quick, if you're on our homepage, you have this dropdown menu, right? Basically it lays out the, um, in your frame, there is a, under District, there is a Curriculum Instruction and Professional Development page. So when you access that page, you get right away the, sort of the big image previews of Educating Our Eagles. These are all links to different, uh, different editions. So if I just click on this very top one, takes me out to this, uh, this site here that's hosting these, and then you can go through it, flip through the, uh, through the edition.
Okay, would you just scroll quickly through so you can see, people can see how much is there? See, right on the bottom, you've got a scroll, and you can stop anywhere, there's a little, it flips like a book.
We have a copy of one of them in our packet.
So if I can just talk about it, because I just think, one of the things we talked about, we're always talking about ways to give the community an opportunity to see, and this, this particular document is what we And this, this particular document is what we refer to as a window into the classroom. So in case people aren't visiting every day, you can see specific lessons or different events that are going on in our classrooms each and every day. So there is, and, and they're put together by our teachers each month, people taking turns on the different things that are going on in the classroom. So if you haven't had a chance to see it or you didn't know it was there, we also, when each edition is published, it goes on to the news feed on the first page of the website, it goes out on social media, so you can just click on it every time an edition is released. So we're trying to make all the things that we're doing as accessible as possible for parents and families who obviously, you know, can't, can't be in every day. So it's a pretty, pretty great publication, and, and I encourage you to, if you have some time, to go back and check out some of the additions if you missed them.
I also think, you know, we were talking both in community outreach and elsewhere, ways the school committee can be an advocate for our district. This is just absolutely wonderful. It's easy, you've got a sample on the left side of your packet, but it's, it's something all editorialized, we should share.
So it's different every month?
Mm-hmm. And as you can see, it's, it's different, it's fun, and it makes you feel good about what we do, hopefully. Okay, all right, moving along. Unless you think we should add something there, let's go on to liaison to early childhood. Okay, and Southern Berkshire Childcare Program, that is actually, we had a good discussion with Smitty Pignatelli again, and we're working on the kind of legislation that we need in order to redefine the relationship. And as I've said before, the Ad-Hoc Regional Agreement Review Subcommittee, given what we're doing currently with the Regional Planning Board, it's not necessary at this point. We just all should be familiar with our regional agreement. All right, future agenda items, when are we expecting the audit report in the fall?
I'd like it to come sometime. I, I don't know yet, they, they still haven't given us any...
Okay.
Follow-up date.
And the guidance and college report?
615.
Is the 615. And the collaboration with other districts is ongoing, hopefully.
TBD.
And it's TBD whether we're going to have other things in that area. All right, we have to go into executive session, and I will accept the motion from someone?
I move that we go to...
You have to read it?
You have to read what's there.
I have to read what's there, sorry. Uh, motion to enter executive session pursuant to MGLC 30A, Section 21A, and three, purpose three, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining if an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining position of the public body and the chair so declares, and not to reconvene an open session.
We have a second for that?
Second.
Okay, thank you very much. The second was Dennis and the motion was Jim. All right, let's vote. Um, let's start with...
No discussion?
I'm going into executive session if we start discussing the material?
No, 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 not at all.
What do you want to discuss?
I, I, I think the notice, I, I think the reason stated is inadequate under the law regarding executive session. It says to discuss with respect to collective bargaining. With who?
With the SBREA.
With the who?
SBREA.
Okay.
Okay, I will insert with the SBREA. Good catch. All right, let's go ahead and vote.
So it's clear for everyone, because it's not clear to me, what is the SBREA?
The union.
Teachers' union.
It's not only the teachers, it's all, all units.
All bargaining units.
All bargaining units in the district. All right, Kim?
Yes.
Okay, Kyle?
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Is Nancy still there? Okay, all right?
Yes.
And I'm a yes.